I haven't heard from Commissioner Wilson. Is anybody else here for him?
I haven't heard from him.
Let's see if he's coming. Shall we go ahead and get started? Yeah. Julie, are we recording? Are we good? Okay, welcome to the Morgan County Commission meeting, December 20th, 2022. Time is just after 5:00 PM. We're going to go ahead and get started. We will begin with an invocation and pledge of allegiance. I will offer that, and then we'll move to our consent items. Our Father in Heaven, we're so very grateful to gather here this evening. We're grateful for the beautiful community in which we live and those who live here. We're grateful for the snow that has fallen and the moisture we've received, and we ask thee to bless us with continued moisture throughout this winter. We're grateful for those who work for Morgan County and ask thee to please bless them. We're grateful for this holiday season and ask that thy Spirit will be upon us and upon our community throughout the holidays. These things we pray for in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will move to consent item number one. Actually, before we do that, I just want to publicly note that we have received from the Department of Natural Resources our annual payment in lieu of taxes payment in the amount of $3,585.84. We want to thank the Department of Natural Resources for providing that. So, thank you very much. We appreciate it. We will put it to good use. All right, let's move to discussion and approval of the December 6, 2022 meeting minutes. Are there any updates to the minutes that have not already been provided to Julie?
So with respect to the declaration of conflict of interest, so instead of saying Commissioner McConnell represents F3, I've represented the owner of the real property that was under consideration for F3. I was not directly involved in that application. See, I represented the owner of the real property in the past, but was not involved in the application.
And then on D of the minutes, right after what he said under Guglin Adams, make a comment on Kevin Eastman. You make the sentence. Or a comment was given by Kevin Eastman, and then you have that other part of it is okay.
Julie, under the public hearing item, the first motion was to go into public hearing, and it says that it was moved and seconded, but it doesn't note that it was unanimously approved. And then the second motion, which was to go out of public hearing also, we just need to note that it was unanimously approved. That's all I had. Any other comments?
Yeah, so in E1, the last bullet point says the commissioners need to know more information about what they already do and what they are saying they will do for our county. Instead of saying what they already do, I think you need to say what Weaver Human Services does. And then on item E2, I think I would just indicate Justin Reese's part of our destination marketing organization. He's part of an entity that we've retained for that purpose.
Just in person.
Brand guidelines were shared and the new tagline of Morgan Valley. You've got an extra quotation mark between Morgan and Valley that can come out. And then... That's fine. Nothing else?
Okay, seeing no further comments, is there a motion on the approval of the December 6, 2022 meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is second to approve the minutes. It says amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Declarations of conflict of interest with any commissioners for any agenda items. Okay, seeing none. We are now on item D, public comments. This is an opportunity for the public to address the commission on any items that you'd like to address. We will have a public hearing for our budget discussion. The fee scheduled public hearing and the public hearing regarding the rezone have both been moved to next meeting. Okay, seeing no public comment, we will move to presentations.
So, Mr. Church, could I just go ahead and make a motion with respect to those items?
Yes, sir.
So, I move that we continue action item F4 and public hearing I until our second meeting in January 2023.
Perfect. Would you mind amending that and adding the fee schedule as well?
I will. I'll make a separate motion on that because I think they want that in the first meeting in January.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion to move item F4, which is the Wendy Wilkinson revocable trust Rose Hill subdivision platform amendment, and item G I... No, sorry, item I, public hearing M and D Nelson rezone to the second meeting in January. Do you have a second on the motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
And then I'll make a motion to continue public hearing item H to the first meeting in January 2023.
Okay, we have a motion to postpone public hearing H till the first meeting in January.
I'll second it since I'm doing all of them, so except for Jared did one.
All those in favor?
So I'm going to stop now.
Aye.
I was last, aye.
Any opposed?
Last time I did, I seconded everything.
Buckets empty.
And then in our typical... We typically approve our calendar for the upcoming year in the last meeting in December, but that's not on our schedule. But I think we should let the public know that our first meeting in January will be January 3rd, 2023.
Thank you. First meeting will be January 3rd, 2023, and we do intend to keep to the same schedule, first and third Tuesdays of every month. We will post that official schedule.
We could probably post it and then ratify.
Yeah, absolutely. Let's go ahead and post it now, and then we'll just ratify.
July 4th is the first Tuesday.
Okay. Any... While we're discussing that, should we just push it to the second Tuesday? I know that that's six months away, so you may not have your calendar set. But now let's push that to the second Tuesday of July.
And then do second and third, or second and fourth?
No, we'd do second and third. We'd still... So that we're keeping the cadence after that. Okay. Any other items regarding the agenda before we move to item E? Okay. Mr. Anderson, UDWR.
Yeah, my name is Eric Anderson. I work for the Division of Wildlife Resources at Salt Lake Office. Thank you for the opportunity to explain to you a project we've been working on for several years with Geneva Rock. This is our Morgan Valley WMA. It's about 36... Approximately 3,600 acres. That WMA is... What we've been working on is a land exchange agreement with Geneva Rock to do an acre-per-acre land exchange. So we're going to exchange one parcel of ours of 104.33 acres for two parcels of Geneva Rocks. In that land exchange agreement, we've worked out a deal. In the maps, I've... I don't know if you guys got the maps, but...
We did.
The one map shows our entire WMA, and then the one-up map shows the land that's being conveyed. You'll see that we've also worked out with Geneva, they're going to give a public access. They're going to... On their property, they're going to give us an easement for a parking lot and an access easement through their property up into our WMA. This WMA has had very little public access. There's been a lot of trespassing issues and stuff like that on private ground. So this is a win-win for everybody here. Gets public plenty of parking, keeps them off the road, and gives them access to... Through Geneva's property to our property, to begin with our property. The property where the trail's going to end is on the park, so they're going to be exchanging to get.
Is that parking lot, will that be approximately where the old road shed is now?
It's going to be just to the east of there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
They're going to cut it, cut it through, and cut the parking lot. We will... We've worked out that we're going to fence it, gate it, put signs and stuff around it, and there will maintain the parking lot and the trail easement.
So is that right where they blast?
No, it's just to the east of the existing... Well, I guess I'd call it the previous state sheds or Utah sheds.
Between those and the poles, right?
Right there. Yeah, between those and the poles.
So they blast right there in that pit, right? Or did the equipment blast it in there?
Oh, I think they still blast in that pit. That's quite a ways from there, but it's up... Because it's up a little ways, but yeah. So...
That part of the... I mean, they haven't minded any of that, you know, we're getting there.
So are they going to build the trail up there for us?
They're going to cut the road in and the parking lot, yes.
Okay, so the trail up to your property will be... Is it going to be a cut trail, not necessarily a road, right?
It's going to be a 30-foot access road. The public will have access to hike or horseback, you know, to be ready for trailers. So it'll be a foot horseback path. We'll have administrative access where we can drive vehicles in there to do other type of maintenance and maintenance.
I notice on the piece that you're giving up, is there going to be like a fence around theirs? So that way, there's not, you know, people when they go up in there won't encroach upon that?
Yeah, we've been working on getting a fence. Well, we haven't obviously been working on getting a fence put in because we don't own it yet, but yeah, there's discussion of fence and stuff.
So now on the other side where the highway is, on the east one, are you going to do anything there with that property that comes down and basically hits the state property? I mean, the Department of Transportation property, or what's...
As far as do what?
So people aren't parking on the highway, or?
Well, I mean, I was...
I mean, I'm just trying to... Because I've seen people do that, and I'm just curious, is there any kind of a... Anything you're trying to do with that access? Or just allow it to happen if happens?
I mean, parking on the freeway is a no-no anyway.
Yeah, I know. Doesn't mean they're not going to.
Correct. I mean, there's been a lot of parking and a lot of trespass on this WMA because of the access issue. Hopefully this, with the road, with the parking lot and the road, that gets there, that will hopefully alleviate the problem. Like, we could put in signs, no parking, or whatever we need to right there.
Okay.
It's a huge thing, Utah wildlife. We could try to sign it.
So what about your other property up to the north that has a whole section in between?
That 80 acres up to...
Yeah, is that accessible in any way, shape or form?
It's all private property around it.
Right now, no.
Right now, no, but someday maybe.
Someday, you never know, you know?
Okay, I was just curious.
Yeah. I mean, this, you know, like I said, this WMA, we, you know, we started buying it in 1942. So it has had really no public access to it since we bought it. So this is going to be great to get public access, alleviate trespassing on private property and stuff like that.
So the way this is depicted along the property, the southern boundary of the property that is being conveyed to Geneva Rock, it shows a strip of the WMA?
It's between the GIS, which it's a GIS. It's going to go right along that section.
Okay, all right. That makes sense. I just...
Yeah.
Wondered why there was that little tail.
Yeah, it's the GIS.
Okay.
Well, I'm really excited about having better public access to that property. I think that's wonderful and appreciate the Department for working so long and hard on that. Eighty years is a long time to work on gaining access.
True.
That's a pretty big deal. And Morgan County, being a county with very little public property, you know, the better access we have to our public lands, the better. And I would hope that those who visit that public property will treat it well so that it continues to be open for future generations, so.
And the county property... Not the county, but there's a little sliver in there of the county just above theirs and the city. So is that the property just above those two?
Yeah.
That's what I thought. Okay.
I mean, yeah, it's not... The city's not on this map, but...
Right.
Yeah, but it's above that greenish trees.
Okay.
Is there any other conditions in this land swap? I don't know. Wish Josh is here or not, but... Because I'm guessing they're going to have to get a land use for that to extend up into there and whatever Geneva would be doing.
So I've been... We've been kind of working this together. We've got a lease agreement with them right now to just basically get that part going with oil, gas mining, and whoever else they need to. It's just... We're not letting them mine it, but it's an agreement that they could go ahead and use our property to expand their pit. If that fails, then this is probably going to fail. So none of this will chance... Will convey over each other until that is... That's been satisfied with all the permitting they need to get through that. And they are in the process of doing that, but, you know, I've got a custom oil and gas mining stuff. Ask it questions as the action goes through, so they are working on that.
As far as the county's concerned, they would have to do a conditional use permit with us.
Right.
Because that conditional use permit runs with the land. And I don't know, maybe they've already applied for it. I haven't heard.
And, you know, he's working on his end with the property and trying to work up... Because this is, you know, PR, the previous management is from the state's device. So, you know, I've got to go through my stuff. I still have to get Fish Water Labor Service approval to do this.
Do you have an estimated timeline on when this would go through? Would all the pieces fall in place?
You know, sometime hopefully near next year I can get it done. I know there's some issues with getting stuff approved through Fish and Wildlife Service right now. They had a shutdown, they're not accepting applications, but that's... I think that's soon to expire. Get those wrong, so I'm hoping right next year.
Before the next eight years?
Yeah.
Before the next eight years.
You know, we still have to go through the governor's office. Stuff like that, we still have to go through that to get his approval to do this.
Excellent. As far as we're concerned, I don't... I mean, I know this is just a presentation, so I don't think there's any vote or anything to be had here. We do appreciate the information. I personally am excited about the opportunity to have better public lands access, so appreciate your work on that.
Part of this is we have to, you know, to go to the governor's office to get a letter of support. Does that sound... You guys be willing to...
Any objections? We'd be happy to do that. Can you get us just a... Maybe a sample of what you'd like to see? We can put it on our letterhead and sign it and get it over to you? Okay?
I'll get it sent to you hopefully this week.
Yep, we'll be happy to do that. I think that's worthwhile.
Are you okay if you get it next week?
Yeah, and that's fine.
Yep, that's great. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to action items, we'll go to action item number one. Mr. Adams with the Langdon Group, who's been contracted by the State Division of Water Rights to help implement the Utah watershed Act. Dan, take it away.
Hey, thanks. Yeah, this is great. I've been making presentations about this all over the state. It's kind of cool to just track it.
We're glad you're home.
Feels really weird, so.
You must have got lost last meeting.
I actually... Since he's not here, I can probably throw him under the bus, and he did not let me know about that. We also just wanted to build the anticipation.
I thought, well, golly, that's a long drive from here.
Yeah, I know. Island road is... Things can happen. Well, so I have two things I want to go over with you tonight. One is about the Watership Council Act, which I think sums it up really well on the agenda. And then also just briefly touch on... Andy and I are also working on the Great Salt Lake Integrated Assessment Plan, which is trying to take all that, the tons of concurrent efforts and plans, and trying to bring them all into one effort. And so we're working with Jacobs Engineering on that. And there's a lot of crossover between the Watership Council Act and trying to do this with the Great Salt Lake Integrated Assessment. So I'll kind of touch on both of those. But just maybe just give you a quick overview. The Watership Council Act was passed in the 2020 legislative session, and then because of COVID, it went on hold for a year. And then the Langdon Group, we were hired with Smith-Hartford Center, a law firm in Salt Lake, and then J.B. Engineers. And the three of us, our team, is who was tasked with implementing the act. So our... The first thing I did was just go out and try to meet with people all over the state to try to help explain what watershed councils are and hopefully help people to not get paranoid and suspicious and try to help them understand the value of them. So we met with over 800 people throughout the state. And then in that year one, in 2021, we created the statewide watershed council. So that's up and running. It has its fifth meeting coming up in January. And that's going really well. So the part we're working on now is there are 11... The rest of the state is divided up into 11 local watershed councils. So for here in Morgan, we're in the Weaver River Watership Council. And then there's also what I kind of call the Hybrid 12th Local Watership Council, which is the five that make up the Great Salt Lake are also forming the Great Salt Lake Watership Council. So when this watershed council for the Weaver is formed, it will have a representative that will be on the Great Salt Lake Watership Council, and it'll also have a representative that's on the statewide watershed council. So the statewide watershed council is made up of a lot of the government agency leaders throughout all the different state agencies that have good natural resources and tribes. And then it will also have, as we get all these 12 local watershed councils, each one of them will have one representative that will also be on that statewide council. So this part about the crossover with the integrated assessment is that all these other concurrent efforts around the Great Salt Lake, they all have either a board or an advisory council or some form. So we really wish the Watership Council Act had been implemented a few years before because then we would have that organization already in place. So it's kind of a little bit of a chicken and the egg thing we're trying to address right now about that. But one of the things we looked at with the Weaver River Watership Council is you already had a great organization with the Weaver River Partnership. You guys know about that group. And so we... That had been an initial thought was, gosh, could that Weaver River Partnership just become the watershed council? But at the same time, we met with them, they had looked at becoming a 501(c)(3) because they wanted to go get funding to be able to do projects. And so they're very supportive of the Watership Council Act, but they are going to continue on as the Weaver River Partnership. And so what we're... So our process we're looking at right now is there's three local watershed councils that we're focused on. The Bear, the Weaver, and Jordan River. And so what we're doing right now is we're meeting with county councils and other key stakeholder groups and asking them if they have thoughts and ideas about individuals that they would like to see as part of the local watershed council. And as it stands in the act, there are 11 seats that are recommended in the act. But there's also the guidance from the statewide council, which will certify the local watershed councils as they can have between nine and 21 seats. So it's like... So an idea might be here for the Weaver is that recreation is not one of the 11 seats that's in the act, but we have tons of people floating the river. So that might make sense to add recreation or some other seats that might be appropriate for this watershed council.
How many counties are involved in this council?
So in this one, it would be... There's three counties. So it'd be Summit, Morgan, and Weaver. Summit is really far down the road on this already. They hired... Summit County hired a woman named Jess Kirby. Jess, she basically was the one personal watershed council. So she's been going out, making tons of partnerships and relationships. She's fundraised about $4 million for Summit County to focus on the upper reaches of the Weaver. So that's... So... But that's kind of... Hold me back here for a second. So what's kind of handy for me, I'm from Oregon, and I was one of the first watershed councils that formed in Oregon in 1996. And so it's been really helpful to look at, go to buy old colleagues in Oregon and learn about what are the lessons learned in watershed councils from that time. Also, Colorado has been doing them now for 17 years. So we've been able to go talk to the other states, talk about how, what their roots learned. One of the things that's really important, I think, to understand is that these... What watershed councils are and what they are not. So they are not a governing, decision-making, policymaking body. They are really designed to improve communication, collaboration, partnership. So like this one with Jess up in Summit County is a great example. She's been doing all this great work, doing all this partnership work, but she didn't even know about the Utah Watership Council Act. So... And then we also have, in the Weaver, there's been a whole bunch of projects with the NRCS, Forest Service, all these different projects that a lot of times people in the same reach of the creek or river don't even know each other, don't even know about the other projects that are going on. So by doing this, when we form these local watershed councils, it helps improve communication, coordination, resource sharing, fundraising, all kinds of things, really improve with that. And I mentioned that each one of those local councils will have a seat on the statewide council. And I mentioned that each one of those local councils will have a seat on the statewide council. That statewide council then has direct access to the legislature and to the governor. So it's a way for our local water issues and needs to have a unified body that rolls up to the legislative body. So, and it's, it's just, these work really, really well in other states.
So I'm confused a little bit on when you said she's focused on the upper Weaver. When you say focused and raising money, focused on what and raising money for what?
So have you guys heard of the shared stewardship before? Shared stewardship, a few years ago, before Herbert left office, the Secretary of Agriculture, which is the Forest Service and the NRCS, came to Utah and signed a shared stewardship agreement with the governor. Shared stewardship, so all the western states now have shared stewardship agreements. And what they're designed to do is to protect waters, point water source protection. So if you, like in the upper Weaver, you have a lot of homes that's been built. There's a ton of dead timber, and so the potential for catastrophic wildfire is really high on the upper Weaver. And so a lot of her work, so she's now partnered with the shared stewardship program, and she's also partnered with like Weaver Basin and others to be able to go and do restoration work to help remove dead timber, to do kinds of things that create fire breaks and make that a healthy system up there.
So it benefits us all?
It benefits everybody. And it's just a great way to improve that coordination, collaboration. Like Bureau of Reclamation, just to record, he called me up, like, we're so thrilled about this. We have a whole pool with millions of dollars that's set aside just for people that are collaborating on water issues. I mean, there's just tons of stuff like that where you can have improved coordination, get more funding, do more projects to improve the resource.
So is this the same thing as what they did down in Beaver County? Or what they're doing in Beaver County? I think you were at that meeting with me on that mat when they talked about Beaver County doing a watershed.
All because of the burn.
Or because of the burns and all that kind of stuff, making sure it didn't happen again?
Yeah, that.
Or is that different?
How long was that that you did that?
It was in September when we were there. It's ongoing right now.
Yeah, that, that would be different, but they will become a watershed council there as well.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, um, yeah, so it's kind of to have strategies, like, so right now that, like, so let me switch gears. So back to the Great Salt Lake, you know, we're all focused on protracted drought and the lake going dry and what are the consequences? There's lots of anxiety around that. But if we had watershed councils up and formed, we would already be having better partnership, communication, collaboration, and stuff like that. It would make that whole effort 100 times better. So not just when times are tough, like we're in a drought cycle and there's wildfire, but also, I mean, you've got to remember, Great Salt Lake, all of us in our lifetimes have seen that thing, you have flood stages too, right? So it's, when you have fees for a famine, that we have better management of the resource is the idea.
So when you talk about members of the council, are there requirements? Does the county have to have an elected official on it or no?
Back to, so the 11 seats that are in the act are for agriculture, industry, Indian tribes, public water suppliers, water planning and research institutions, water quality, fish and wildlife, water-dependent habitat and environments, watershed management, mutual irrigation companies, and local sponsors of reclamation projects. So it's, you're just, what you're really trying to do is you really try to get a really good diverse mix of people so that when you do planning or when you do NEPA, when you do environmental, they're already on the same page with each other. They've been out on the ground, they've, they have shared understanding of the resource. It just makes things work a ton better when you actually try to go and implement and get work done.
So Dan, who ultimately appoints these folks to the, to the group? Is that a shared responsibility between the three counties or how does that work?
Yeah, that's a great question. So I just met with Summit County last week. Um, what they're going to do is they're going to work through Jess and how I create a list of people they think would be great to be on. Um, and it does, not necessarily people that are only in Summit County, but as they look at the whole reach of the river, are there others that come to mind? That's what we'd love to do with you all as well, is if you have ideas of individuals that you think would be good to have on there. And, and what we'll do then is we'll collect all those names. We already have a bunch of names already from people that have called us, people we've met from Weaver River Partnership. So we'll take that list, we'll then contact those folks and say, hey, do you want to do this? And then once we get that feedback, what we'll do is probably have a Zoom meeting. So it's a virtual meeting, so easy for everybody in the whole Weaver River watershed to participate. And we'll just say, hey, here's who we've identified, here's the folks that would like to be on there. Then, once we kind of get that, share that information so everyone's on board, we'll convene that group. And then we have guidance from the statewide council on what they're looking for to certify the local councils. So we'll help that, uh, this local council to, to get organized that way, help them to go make their presentation to statewide council. So our, our contract is to help identify and form the councils, and then to also kind of be there to support them as they get up and going, and then we back out and they're off and going on their own. So that's, um, they're also, they're each, the Division of Water Resources has local area planning specialists that are based on these 12 watershed council areas. And so now you'll be able to have some of these water resources that can come to your watershed council. We give all the latest, greatest information. It gives you a one-stop shop for agencies to come and communicate about their programs and their plans and update on drought and all that kind of stuff. You have a one-stop shop to get that done. So that's, that's a huge benefit. It's a huge benefit to the state because those area planning specialists, when they come try to get information out, I mean, it's extremely difficult because there's so many diverse interests. Really hard to get to them all, but with watershed council, you have that.
And how's that council funded?
So that, there's some things I think will be amendments to the act over time. Coming from doing this before, you know, in Oregon, that's kind of key is funding. Because if you just convene, usually the people that are on, like a watershed council, are people that are already on five other committees and councils, right? And so their time is precious, and so we don't want to just go to another meeting now. You want it to be valuable, use their time. So to make that valuable, you really need to be able to point to projects and things you get done on the ground and say, we as a diverse group got that done. You got to have money to do that. And so I think that's one of the things we'll see change over time is improving of access and, and funding for the councils. What each of the states really doing differently, Oregon, the counties actually have a pathway for the state through the county to give money to their local council. The councils there get $120,000 every two years. Colorado, what they do is, um, they have a pot of money that the governor sets aside, and they have competitive, it's a competitive grant process. But they had, they're similar to Utah in that they had no paid staff, no funding that way. They've now made an amendment to their act, and they now have a paid, um, support staff to do it. Oregon, they actually, operating budget per average watershed council there is between $400 and $2.6 million per watershed council because they go out and chase competitive grants to then fund them doing a whole bunch of work together.
I just wondered, I mean, Summit's hired a full-time employee, and she's already got $4 million. Sometimes people find it hard to share, but that's, it seems like if it's benefiting everyone, everyone, it would be good to, to contribute, so.
Yeah. Yeah, she was, some folks that are ahead of the curve and sophisticated, they're kind of nervous about this because they're like, man, we found ways to get a lot of money. And now they're nervous about sharing that information, having more competition for that grant money. I think there's actually so much money that is out there right now that's just unknown and untapped. But I think, I don't think that's a big problem.
So are we going to need to hire somebody that does this or appoint somebody that's a, just a volunteer to begin with?
Yeah, it's really up to you. I mean, I, I, I don't see you needing to hire something, but if, you may want to as a county council, say, hey, do we want one of our council members to be on the watershed? Or is there somebody else that works for the county that you think would be a good fit to be on there? But that's what I would encourage you is look for people that would be good on a council like that, especially people that are good at helping these things get up and running. Some folks are better at that than others. But I, I don't, the other thing too that I would encourage you to think about, so for example, Forest Service, BLM, a lot of agencies, they, they won't have a formal seat on the councils, but they are going to formally assign and designate somebody from their agency to attend and be part of all those watershed council meetings. So that way they can hear and know what's going, you know, what's going on, and they can also share information. So that might be another thought is maybe the county at least to have somebody that, uh, that, you know, would be a participant in it even if they're not in a formal seat on the council.
So do we need to get one from a couple of different areas or just a person or two people or what?
Why don't I do this? I, I'll, I will email you the list of the 11 seats.
Okay.
And then what I would suggest you do is as a council, look at those 11 seats and see who comes to mind for those different needs. And then if you can give us back that list in, you know, a couple of weeks or something like that, that would be wonderful. And then we'll add that to our collective of all the other names we're hearing about. Like I said, Summit's sending us their recommendations, and Weaver will be doing the same thing.
It's monumental. It's a huge task. I know when I worked on the Weaver River in the western Weaver County.
Right.
I mean, I could name 10 different agencies that touched the river, right? But yet nobody wanted to come in and clean up the debris that was in the river. They, they left that on, on the county. And so I think there's just so many different people involved. Yeah, there's just a huge list, but to be able to get everybody on the same page at any given time, I think that alone would be pretty big.
It's true. Yeah, I appreciate you saying that, Jer. It has helped, frequently aged me a little more. I think that part about, um, not only is funding key, but I think the other part that is key is not trying to be everything for everybody. And so the success of watershed councils in other states, like the one I was part of, the Upper Deshute Watership Council, they focus on monitoring, restoration, and education. And that's it. They don't focus on water rights or anything else that is their lane. It helps them to get funding because they're very clear and articulate what they do, and they can point to all the projects that they do tied to that. And so like, to your point, like, a lot of that stuff or all that junk and stuff in the river, if it's restoration, monitoring, and education, those, all three of those really fit well with those types of. And WRI, um, uh, that is also just a great resource and a great pass-through for funding to watershed councils as well.
WRI is what?
WRI is, it's a one-person state agency, and it's the watershed restoration initiative.
Okay.
And they, um, it's just a great, it's a, it's a really great mechanism for government, private donors or whatever to pass through money to do restoration-based projects. I mean, they push through millions and millions of dollars a year through that program. And so for them, actually having watershed councils up and running, so you have a shared voice of like, hey, here's our problem, here's where our need is, and then you make those requests. It makes it tons easier to get that funding than to get the work done. Any other questions or, you know, this has been really informative?
I have one more. What, when you're talking about all the private land in Morgan County touching the watershed, how, how does that, how does that work, you know? If, when you're trying to do projects?
Yeah. So I actually have a third project on the Weaver River as well. Through the Division of Forestry, Fire, and State Lands, you have the, um, Conanser Supreme Court case about access. And then there was also Orange Street case up by PUA about Weaver River access. You guys probably know about those, right? And then, um, so Brian Steed, when he was the director of PNR, asked me if I would come in and just go and meet with property owners and kind of understand their concerns about access. And so I did a really big assessment, went and met a lot of people, and gave those recommendations back to the state. But that is, I think, right now, everything's kind of on hold because the lake going dry is the top of the list for everybody. But I know the state is really keen on wanting to make sure that they respectfully work with private property owners. And, but that, it's, I think a lot of stuff, again, like, these things all intertwine with each other, but I think it's good for you to know that the state is really taking a active, smart role on not wanting to make that stuff worse for private property owners. But I do think kind of the pattern of a lot of those is that you have, um, I know this is going to sound stereotypical, so forgive me for that, but you have kind of wealthier people that are coming and buying property that have been in ag forever, and they're not necessarily wanting to keep it in ag, but they want to have exclusivity. And so they don't want people flowing through. And when I did all those interviews, there's horrible stories of people going through in their inner tube, getting out and going to the bathroom in some extreme yard, you know, they're just, it's kind of a mess. And so the state is trying to figure out what are the best ways to tackle that. Part of that is Forestry and Fire, uh, and State Lands, they are in charge of sovereignty of state lands. And so if a river is determined to be navigable, then that, the determination for navigability is the same determination for sovereign. So the state is trying to determine, should they claim title to the Weaver River bed? And that's, that's a pretty tricky deal.
Alcohol, elimination of alcohol, cure a little bit of that.
Or it might help, you know? Just so that, that kind of, that process is on hold until late spring. So if you hear anybody that's fired up about that, have them call as well.
What's your number?
You're on the court, guys, a public meeting.
Just send it to us. Then I'll have it.
Dan, when, when does the Langdon Group's agreement to do this end?
For watershed councils?
Yeah.
So we have, um, basically three years left.
We're lucky we have Dan in our county.
I was just going to say, so in three years, we can pull him onto the watershed council.
This is a bloody curse. I, I told the state years ago I would never work on a local project. He said, tonight, people coming to my house, like, when they did the UDOT bridge, people come to my house like 10:30 on Sunday night, wow, like, oh, can we just talk tomorrow? But it is kind of weird. I do this stuff all over the West, and so it is kind of cool to help us up here in my own communities.
So you don't want to be our representative then?
In three years, that's what I heard him say. In three years, he'd be happy to do it.
We got to have it going before then.
Yeah, I'll, but I'll send you the, those 11. And actually, I can send you just kind of the organizational documents that the state council came up with.
That'd be great. And then we'll, we'll coordinate amongst us to consolidate all of our suggestions and then send that back to you.
Okay, perfect, great. Thank you all.
Thank you. All right. Excuse me. Boyd, you are up.
Thanks for lifting your chair, Mike. I thought you were over there shrunk.
It keeps sinking now on me.
I think it's time to replace that chair.
This chair keeps sinking.
So, good evening, council. I'm just here to, if you have any questions on this interlocal cooperative agreement for sale and secure hazmat material or have that service rotation list. So basically, uh, this is an interlocal agreement with us and several other fire departments and the Weaver Dispatch Center. And what it is for is kind of how this came across as like, occasionally when we have that structure fire, we always need a board of company to come and secure that property for us. And if we have a hazmat incident, we have a hazmat company come in and take care of that for us. What we started to find is a lot of these companies were insured property, and so it put the counties at risk. So we got together as fire departments and came up with this interlocal agreement. And basically what it does is just help us track these entities. And basically what it does is just help us track these entities to make sure they have the proper documentation and insurance. And in doing so, we put them on a rotation list. So if we do need a board of company or hazmat company to come up and hazmat materials fill, then they'll come out and take care of that for us, and we know that these guys are insured. So basically, that's what the contract is all about. I think it's a great contract, and I've worked with Garrett, he's went over it, and I've got his way out on it. So do you have any questions?
I have one question. Since Morgan City then is, we provide service for them, that's why they're not on this, is that correct? Okay.
So I have a few comments and questions. In the introductory paragraph, we're identified as a Utah municipal corporation. I'm pretty sure that's inaccurate.
Yeah.
I believe we're a political subdivision of the state. Mountain Green is listed as a municipal corporation. It's not. Are you intending that to be the Mountain Green Special Fire District? So we would need to accurately identify them. And then I guess that would be a special service district of the state. I don't know how they formally designate.
And I, I did make some comments to that degree.
Okay.
But I'm not counsel for Mountain Green.
Mountain Green, right. Yeah, I don't know that they have it.
But, but yeah, that, Mountain Green as listed here does not exist.
Okay.
And my understanding with Morgan County, I would prefer it be listed as a political subdivision. I did a little research into the Utah municipal corporation. Sometimes that is used for counties. And it was my understanding that most of these, I think there's 11 entities or so, and it's already been circulated and signed in jurisdictions. So I, I said, well, is it a red flag where we have to change it? In, from my research, counties are sometimes referred to as Utah municipal corporations, even though it's not.
How do we typically designate in our contracts though?
I would just say as a, a political subdivision of the state of Utah.
If you think it's all right, I'm not gonna lose sleep over it. I just...
If it was with one other entity and they hadn't already approved it in other jurisdictions and, and it wasn't so far down the road, I, I think the bigger issue really is Mountain Green, as it's stated here, doesn't exist, but that's, I guess, their attorney. So if they end up changing it, then I, I think we should request that change to a political subdivision of the state of Utah.
So in substance, I don't have a problem with what you've talked about, but I, I don't understand the language of, so the, the third whereas clause, the agencies desire to participate in Ogden City's agreements with private contractors. And then the fourth says Ogden is willing to have the agencies be parties to its contracts. So in my world, if somebody, a third party is going to be a party to a contract, they execute a jointer and they become responsible in part for the terms of that contract. And I'm not sure that's what we're agreeing to do, given what you described. I mean, if we're gonna cooperate in identifying third-party providers to provide hazardous material services on a rotation basis, great, that makes perfect sense to me, to make sure they're insured. But are we literally joining contracts that Ogden City has entered into as I would define pursuant to a jointer, where we have some responsibility for that? I mean, the, the section four says, the agencies agree to join Ogden City's agreements.
Yeah.
What agreements are those? Are we sure we want to join those? How is that being accomplished? That is just a little confusing to me. And then the, I, if alls we're doing is cooperating in a list and identifying providers, why are we providing an indemnification in section seven, the hold harmless language? You know, except... So it's like, we'll defend and hold harmless the others for expenses, penalties and damages arising out of or any way, probably should say, or in any way related to any act, omission or event occurring as a consequence of performing under this agreement. Well, as a consequence of Morgan County performing under this agreement, in which case I could understand an indemnification, or any of the agencies performing under the contract? Are we, are we saying we're going to provide an indemnification for them in terms of their own actions unless it was negligent, which is the qualification at the end? And I would say, no, we shouldn't do that. And then, and then it says in the next one, with the governmental immunity, the last sentence, subject to the act, each party will be responsible for its own actions and will defend any lawsuit brought against it and pay any damages awarded against it. Well, how do I play that off against my indemnification obligation in section seven?
Have we taken this to USIP at all to discuss with them? Anything on it?
No, I haven't.
No.
So, and with, so starting in section seven, rather than indicating Morgan County, Mountain Green, so on and so forth, it does say each party. So that's how I was reading it. Maybe it is ambiguous. It's just saying each party in their capacity will be doing this for all the other parties under, you know, with whatever interaction they have with the hazmat group. And so that's how I read it, even though it doesn't list Morgan County specifically, it's just saying each party, because there are so many agencies associated, that it's just...
Yeah, I understand that, but then, when you talk about in any way related to any act, omission or event occurring as a consequence of such parties performing under this agreement, then, if you wanna shortcut it that way.
Okay.
Anyway, I don't have a fundamental problem with what you're trying to do.
I get it.
The contract was a little bit, I'm like, what, what are we agreeing to here in terms of the jointer? You know, 'cause our, our, Ogden City identifies a contractor to be on this rotation list. Do they then enter into a contract with them to provide services at a, at a specified rate?
No, there's no cost.
Well, but if...
There is.
There has to be, if the contractor provides the service.
So the contract, so if we have hazmat bill, what this contract reads is if whoever did spill, the contractor hazmat team will come in and bill them, not County. If that person, like, can't find him, just goes away, then the spill company does not charge the fire department at all.
So, okay, so they've identified third-party contractors who have the appropriate insurance. There's an occurrence where they're called out, they provide this, perform the service, and then they send a bill to the property owner, which probably then tenders to its homeowner's insurance company. And that's how they get paid. So there, if there are no agreements between the providers and Ogden City, then what agreements are we saying that we're willing to join? That, that, you see where I'm confused? So, again, I have no, no problem.
I wonder why there's no attachment of the agreement.
Well, there isn't any agreement, it doesn't sound like. It sounds like they just pre-qualify third-party providers to perform the service.
I do see the issue though, that you're bringing up with the whereas clauses. This is one, two, three, four and five. Oh no, three and four. So three, it talks about Ogden City's agreements, which wouldn't necessarily be a contract. It could be, you know, we agree to use you or like you're our preferred. But four does specifically refer to its contracts for seal and secure. And I haven't reviewed any of those contracts.
So what I would recommend is that we get some clarity on this stuff. And I'm, you know, I'm sorry it's, we're late to the party in terms of getting it executed, but I'm just a little confused by this document.
Okay, so I'll work through Garrett and we'll see if we can play some of those.
I'm, I'm only one person. If you got, you know, if that...
I know, but you're an attorney and so is Garrett. I'm not.
And I'm not either.
I see no paint and flooring in here.
I just figured you wanted to end the year on a bang.
Yeah, absolutely. Sign a contract that I don't know what it means.
Just as long as you know you're not getting your billable hours for this.
Okay. I'm not. I know that.
All right. Thank you, Boyd. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we are just about two minutes after six o'clock. We have a public hearing scheduled for six o'clock. That is the budget, 2022 budget hearing. So we're gonna move to that and then we'll come back and finish our action item.
Oh, but that, I could move to approve the action item.
Do you wanna do that?
Yeah.
Okay, let's do that.
I'll move to make a motion to approve the assignment and assumption of lease and Morgan County consent with, for the assignment of a lease from Lindy Alley to David S. Cleveland.
I'll second it.
Motion in a second to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. All right, that was quick and easy. Okay, we will move to our budget hearing. Leslie, you're up.
He sent my email.
Yeah. I did. Oh, good, now I won't have to bring it up.
And this is the same, no adjustments from your email already?
No, it's just that they're talking.
Okay.
It's pretty straightforward. We had a few budgets go over. We're just fixing those, some budgets, removing money within the budget, others are taking building money from the general fund. Unbalanced, sorry.
And this has been properly noticed.
Yes.
So, any questions from the commission before we move into the public hearing portion? Okay, seeing none, we'll look for a motion to move to public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Okay, a motion in a second to move into the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we are now in public hearing for our budget. Seeing no public comment.
No protest, no comment.
We will look to...
You mean, you don't want to make comment?
We will look for a motion to move out of public hearing and reconvene the public meeting.
So moved.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second to move out of the public hearing and reconvene the public meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have before us resolution CR 22-12. This will be a roll call vote when we do get to that point.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, ma'am.
So I was meeting with Alex today. He is suggesting taking the fair money and putting it into the 33 fund so that we don't have, you know, the general fund and also the 33 fund. We would run every, through that 33 fund.
What else, remind me, what else is the 33 fund?
So that's the capital improvement fund. So he said we could go in and put employee money for employees so that when Brett's employees work for the fair, they would be quoted correctly and they would be coming out of that budget instead of public works.
We can run, we can run fair expenses through a capital improvement fund?
What he said. But he wants your thoughts.
That goes back to the same as the ramp tax too, is how it's set up.
Yes.
I mean, I, I don't have any objection to the idea, just as long as we're not, we don't have an issue with, you know, the accounting of it and it doesn't affect our ability to spend the way we have.
Okay.
I mean, ultimately, that's kind of what we've set up, is that we would look and see what was left over after our fair expenses and move it over to that fund from the general fund.
Think about it.
One thing that I noticed when I was talking to, to him.
To operate that out of a capital improvement seems a little wonky to me.
Well, it's, it's a fund.
It's just a fund in general.
It's just a fund.
And it's a rollover fund.
Correct. So we would create, like, just like a normal fund. It would have employees, it would have office supplies, it would have all those that we felt necessary.
So we wouldn't call it a capital improvement fund then? You're saying we would call it the fair...
It's just a 33 fund.
A 33?
We'd call it the county fair fund or whatever we want.
So why are we, why are we doing it again?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Because it's a fund.
It's, it's one of those...
And a fund is handled differently.
That's right.
So any money that wasn't used would roll over to the next year.
I guess the concern I have is that this, Alex has been, hasn't this group been doing our auditing for a few years?
No, they do our accounting.
Accounting.
They do the accounting, not the auditing.
Okay.
So I would want to maybe get the opinion from the auditor as well, just to make sure they...
He just said, throw it out, see what they mean.
I guess I always have a concern when we've reviewed these things for years and then all of a sudden it's an issue now.
Okay.
And, and then the other thought would be if it makes it harder on us, I would not be, I think that's why we're trying to think through, okay, how is this process working? Is it gonna make it more difficult?
I think it really gets better because then you're not gonna have the public works budget going over because they just spent the last three weeks running the county fair.
That's right. So, so basically what you...
But I think we need to have the, the fundamental conversation in that case is, the county fair is, is a Morgan County thing that we're putting on. So just because our public works spend time and energy there, are we gonna charge ourselves for that service? Maybe, and maybe that's the right way to go. Then again, maybe that's not the right way to go, I don't know.
I don't know that we're charging ourselves for the services as much, it's just tracking it in a particular way.
We would be charging ourselves because we would be taking that from the fair revenue if we did that.
Because he doesn't want to use his budget money for the fair.
But it's our fair revenue.
But it's our fair revenue, and it's also, it's also our public works department. If we direct them to do something, we direct them to do something, you know what I mean?
But we did the same thing like last time with the airport and the snow removal.
Yeah, which is also something, I mean, I guess fundamentally, if that's where we want to go.
We put it in a budget line item. Well, I mean, I, I like that because, at least on the airport side of things, because then we're, where there's potential limitations on where we can spend revenue from the airport, then I think we should expense things to the airport that are legitimately airport expenses.
You're true accounting of what your, what costs you doing, like your fair costs.
What, what this would effectively do is going to affect the total amount left at the end that can go into the actual capital improvements.
Correct. And I think we're gonna have to recognize that that's the route we're going to go. Up until now, at least for the last several years, the, the fair has covered its expenses and we really haven't put any money in from the general fund. But if we're going to go that route, we need to start putting some general fund money into there to cover some of those expenses.
And that's what he suggests.
Because I don't expect the fair to generate enough revenue to pay all our employees to do that. I don't think that's right.
Right. And he said he would suggest, you know, putting an amount from the general fund into there.
Every year as kind of the seed money.
Yes.
I think from the, from the fair board's perspective, they would love that, because they've been asking for years to be able to roll money over.
Yes.
And we've always told them, no, we can't do that because it's in the general fund and that just goes back into the general fund.
Right.
So if we set up a separate fund, I mean, I don't, I don't have a problem with that fundamentally, as long as we understand that we've got to fund it initially too. We can't just expect it to generate it. I mean...
But haven't we been seeding?
We have.
Well, we've given $6,000 the last two years.
We also have a line item, a line item of $125,000 every year for the fair. Now, we're expecting to take that in.
It cancels itself out because we have, we have a revenue and expenditure line item.
But we have that money coming before the money's coming back to us. So it's coming out of the general fund. My proposal is this, why don't we go and have Alex come up and explain these different things to help simplify the process? It doesn't mean that just because it's been done in the past means that we need to continue doing things in the past. We need to streamline stuff. We're not gonna be here all the time. Why does the next council or the next commission have to take care of a problem that is still a problem? So I'm saying that we need to go through this whole budget thing, and it wasn't my suggestion, by the way. I've just, I've just had talks with them and, and this... I've just, I've just had talks with them, and, and this is one thing he suggested, is that he needs to maybe explain it to us, how this whole budget works, so that way, when it comes every year, we can then at least decide, or not decide, we can at least say, okay, yes, we need to put from the general fund money here, or we need to take money from this other fund and put it into here. And that way, we get the proper movement of the money, instead of like Leslie's happening to do now, well, where's this money supposed to be going, or what it's supposed to be going for? And then the treasurer has a problem with, where's the money, I'm getting this money in, but I don't know exactly where it goes. So we've got problems within it, and it needs to be fixed. And that's the only thing I have seen, is it needs to be fixed. And so I'm requesting that we do that, and have Alex come up and maybe explain it in a work session with us.
Yeah, and I, I guess what threw me off a little bit is relating it to the 33 fund, if that's a capital improvement project fund, versus saying, we're, we're gonna be tracking this better, and, and I'm all for tracking things better, 100%. I would also say, if it's, you know, we mentioned the fair, but we've got a lot of budgets we can track better. So if this explanation from Alex is, we're gonna throw in these mechanisms to track this better, then let's, man, let's throw it across the board of, of airport, of fair, of whatever.
Yeah, I think a lot, the airport's a great example, that, you know, maybe we ought to have a fund that's separate. We've talked about that in the past.
Your 33 fund's named as Morgan County Fair Fund.
So it's not capital...
And then within that, you have a capital, program's capital improvement.
Oh, okay, that's interesting.
And then there's also another fair fund in another area of the budget.
In the general fund.
Well, in the general fund, we have a fair fund.
I'm, I'm fine having the explanation. I would just prefer that it be explained with a recommendation.
Right.
So that it, we can be more efficient and just hear the explanation.
With verification from our auditor.
From our auditor, yeah, I'd hate for us to make changes, and then the auditor, at the end of the year, say, why'd you do that?
That's fine with me.
Okay, we can talk to him.
And, and I'd have them review for any, any other funds that they think we ought to make changes on, to simplify.
For sure.
We want your job to be as easy as possible. We really do.
Cool. Excuse me. Okay.
All right.
Any other comments on CR 22-12?
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution CR-22-12, a resolution of the Morgan County Commission on Adopting Certain Amendments to Morgan County's 2022 budget.
Second?
A motion a second, this is a roll call vote, Commissioner Fackrell.
Aye.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
I vote yes. Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wilson?
And yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay. That brings us to our commissioner comments. Commissioner Fackrell.
You ought to use me at the end.
What's that?
I say you ought to use me at the end, because I always think of something after you guys talk.
Well, that's why we get to you first, so speed this thing up. Just kidding. No, go ahead. You want me to wait till the end, I'll start on the other end.
Okay, start at the other end.
Sure, Wilson.
So I, I emailed you at the first of the meeting, a email of how many things are wrong with that truck.
Which truck?
The truck that was parked up behind the...
Oh, pickup truck?
Uh-huh. That we were gonna try and maybe refurb and, and get back running. And so... It's a lot.
Have we made any progress on the motor pool thing? And moving those couple of vehicles that we have into that?
Well, what we've been doing is, 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 she's been making appointments, but it hasn't been working. It's, two cars is not a lot. And I, I really didn't think they were being used as much as they're being used. And maybe it's just because it was during all the conferences and trainings and things like that. You could tell me a little bit better, is that just in the fall usually, or is it year-round?
No, it's year-round.
So, I mean...
Be better off looking at buying a used vehicle as something?
So we're 1, 12, 15, 16, 17, 27. I guess it's not as, when I first looked at it, it seemed a little... It's about...
About 5,600 bucks.
$5,000, yep. I guess when you think of the price of a truck, and we don't have to fix all of it at once, that's not what makes it run, you know?
How many miles are on it?
No, I thought they have that, no, they don't. They have...
I didn't see a mi, there's like an odometer in, odometer out statement, but it's not filled in, so...
So shouldn't we have some vehicles coming off lease with the sheriff's department this year? We should have three every year coming off lease.
Yes, we do.
So we could consider, instead of trading all three in, trade two in and keep one.
True.
Use that, it's not money out of our pocket immediately, we'd still have, you know, that trade value to cover, but we know the history on the vehicles at least, and we wouldn't have to go out and buy anyone, but that's, I don't know, maybe a consideration.
I think we could, I think if we did fix this truck, we could sell it for more than...
More than 5,600 bucks. That might be an option, too.
And, and we could look at, which, which should we do? Because she wants, she wants to pull the trailer, and we, yeah, we might keep one for the...
Well, maybe we fix this and let her use it until the other ones come off lease, and then we acquire one and sell this one.
Because we always end up with almost about, when we trade in our leases, almost enough to buy a, a brand-new vehicle.
Between three of them, you know, we end up with.
I, I mean, I agree, it's expensive, you know, what's an 18-year-old truck? But if we, we're not gonna be able to really acquire another one for, that's much better, I imagine, for 5,600 bucks. So maybe we get this fixed, let her use it, and then when the other ones come off lease, let's make a determination. Maybe we say, no, let's put it towards newer vehicles and let her use this for a couple of years, see how it goes.
Okay, that's good for me. All right.
You want me to do that, then?
You're, you're the boss when it comes to this stuff.
Okay, well, it goes over five. I, that's how, that's what I would do.
That's right.
I, I think that's wise.
Okay, all right, well, then I have the majority of your opinions, then. That's all I have.
Commissioner Anderson?
No, I don't think I have anything in particular, just with all the conversations with everybody that I've dealt with, and whether it's UDOT or legislators or other entities, they're pressed with the commission's willingness to move forward on things and to move on things. So, I know, I, I think there's a lot of times, just conversations that aren't passed forward about that, but just, I guess, without sounding too cheesy, but just proud to be a part of, of you guys and, and the thought process that goes into what we do, and all of us wanting the, for the most part, the same objective for the county, for our residency. I think it's just been a phenomenal year and a phenomenal thing to be a part of. I'm proud to be a part of, proud to be a part of a group with you guys to move these things forward, so, that's it.
Well said. Teamwork makes the dream work. All right. With your permission, I'll send a, an email out to our county employees, just wishing them happy holidays, if they have objection about it.
Good.
That's great.
And then just publicly wanted to thank Leslie for all your work on the budget this year, Julie as well, and all of our county employees that may be watching, we appreciate all your work this year in 2022, and we look forward to a, a great 2023, so thank you.
Commissioner McConnell?
So this Morgan County Arts Council that did the Messiah, I don't know, I don't think we have any affiliation with them, and I don't know that we want to, but they, I thought there was a good community turnout for that event on Saturday night and Monday, more on Monday than on Saturday. I think if we had only done one, then we might have not been able to put everyone in the auditorium, it would have been close, but it was good for those of you that were able to attend.
There were some great singers in that choir, too.
I stood next to a couple of them.
He sang that modestly, he was one of the section leaders I saw on the program, so...
Did he have a solo?
Not in that way, those solos are tough.
Those solos are crazy tough, yeah, those were, those were impressive. Okay, Commissioner Fackrell, we gave you time to think.
It's all right, still have the same thing, I just don't know if anybody else had the same comment, so... This last week, we had the Coraggio Group from the Destination Marketing Organization from the state of Utah State Office of Tourism, and they were very, very impressed with our county. Some of the comments back was, we are very friendly, and they says, that's unreal, it's a lot of places they go to. And they said that the knowledge of even these teenagers that were helping them out to find different places in the county was very, very good. They said that the nicest thing about Morgan County, and they know what we're trying to do, which is to keep what we have, is that we are close, we're in very close proximity to Salt Lake. And so when they have been doing some other projects in other counties, they all say we're close to Salt Lake, we have, you know, freeway access, but they're three hours away. And here we are, 40 minutes or 45 minutes away from the airport. And they says the nice, one of the other nice things around our county that they really liked was it's quiet, tranquil, and they're gonna try to help us keep it that way. And so that was some of the things that happened there, plus the fact that we do have the dark skies designation for East Canyon, and there's some grants coming out that the state, other parts of the Utah Office of Tourism are trying to help us with more grants to help us maintain our dark skies throughout this county. So there's a lot happening in the tourism, destination marketing, and the economic development from my perspective, so...
It's great to hear. Thank you. And looking forward to more great things next year.
Me, too.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that you have happy holidays, and that we adjourn.
I'll second it.
Motion, Second Hall, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much for your time this evening.
You guys have a happy...
Merry Christmas, all right? And I think I'm done for the year. Are you done?
I hope. I can't imagine anybody's gonna do it. Yeah. They weren't ready, the outlook, any of them.
He sends an email and said they're on the table, or postponed it.
I don't know if they're trying to get us additional information based on the planning commission's recommendation of giving you that license.
What, did everybody pass him down?
Yeah.
Something?
I slipped him. Christmas cards? Hey, I gotta make stat, too. Matt collects them, that's why. There's gotta be some way for them to use all their pack money, eh? Well, Matt, Matt collects them, he puts them on his fridge.
Yeah, I'm loved, I am loved. I don't think we had...
Spills that out on his ceiling.
I saw that they recommended denial. Hey, hold on, I, I've got you a hat and shirt, so...
I don't know.
No, it'd be good to know, because I'd like to hear their perspective and point of view, if you want. Because I look at it.
About size, you know?
Commercial. I mean, they're obviously wanting to fit. Take a hat, you'll...
Pick a size.
Then you want these, or do you want us to keep them?
And if I keep them, then I can update them, I can put the new stuff in for the new year.
And go ahead.
Well, and, yeah, he's a good kid. Far does the county center designation expand. Yeah, I, he was one of my priests, well, I've known him, I was his bishop. Four years, too. So I think he had a hard time...
Oh, right, okay, right where it goes over the hill, is that, is that the entrance into this property?
I should have known this was from you, because it says your favorite commission. I, that's why I wrote it on there. I looked at that, I wouldn't have... And I didn't know if you carried my chicken scratcher, but...
I was driving up, I was kind of looking, trying to think of where it was in relationship to the other stuff.
Yeah, I, she mentioned that to me when I saw it a little bit ago, but I wouldn't even know unless they said something, right?
You know, Tyson?
But I wouldn't, I mean, I know she's older, but...
From my perspective, we don't have any high density, so...
Is it two, or five, or seven?
Ten. Hey, Merry Christmas to you, please, take your shirt and hat off.
Shirt, have it, huh?
Uh, apartments? Sorry, have you been, you don't go to Salt Lake City? Yeah, she hired him as an employee at the bowling alley. I mean, multi-family, four-to-five-story product has become the replacement for, you know, local commercial blocks. And you can understand why.
Well, definitely don't need two X's.
One, there's a need for...
It's like all you got is XL and two X's.
To those mom-and-pop stores.